Alright. Good evening, everybody. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, please join me with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of the members, please. Brad?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Jill?
Here.
Ringway? Yes. We have a quorum. Next up on our agenda is the approval of the agenda before us.
Motion to approve the current agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Roll call, please. Mueller?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ringway? Yes. Item number three is the approval of our minutes from the July fourteenth regular school board meeting. Everyone has had a chance to review them. Uh, any changes or corrections? Hearing none, I would request, um, motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes of the July fourteenth twenty twenty five regular school board meeting as presented.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Alright, we have that motion and second to approve the minutes of the July fourteenth meeting. Roll call, please. Mueller?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Ringway? Yes. Item number four is the time that we disclose whether any board member has any conflicts of interest, whether direct or indirect, with anything on our agenda. Hearing none, we will move on to item number five, public comment. Shereen, did we have anyone to sign up?
No.
Alright, thank you. Item number six is our consent agenda. Does any board member wish to remove anything for discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
In a second, please.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please. Mueller?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ringway? Yes. Item number seven, good news, student achievement, and who's the lucky one starting out? Ryan? Alright, Mr. Morris, thank you.
Alright, you're welcome. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the twenty-five, twenty-sixth year officially as far as activities go. So, I'm gonna give you a little rundown of what's happening over, uh, at high school, and if any questions, feel free to ask. So, last Monday, the fourth, girls and boys soccer, girls tennis, sideline cheer, competitive cheer, and competitive dance all started. So, I'm gonna give you a little rundown of what's going on up here to them. So, Yankton High School, boys and girls soccer teams open their season this week. It's gonna be a little crazy, which are about the weekend going on at the same time. So, Friday the fifteenth, we're at home against Rapid City Stevens at five P M and seven P M. And then Saturday morning, this is probably crazy, this will be, but we play at nine and eleven against Rapid City Central. And obviously, as you know, the parade is at nine thirty, so Douglas and Crane and Pine in the neighborhood will be a busy area that morning. So, but we make it work, we always do, so we just hide. Our girls tennis season opens up their season, uh, this Friday out in Pier. They play Rapid City Central and Pier and Tri-Neale out there. And the highlight of the girls tennis season coming up is we get to host the E S D tennis tournament this year. That's on September twenty-ninth and thirtieth. And a side note, our fiftieth birthday doing that on the thirtieth, so. Great birthday present, I'm going to the E S D tennis tournament. Our cheer and dance teams open their season on the thirtieth of August up in Aberdeen at the Aberdeen Invite. And then their home invitational is September eleventh. And then today, football started and boys and girls cross country started. So, the Bucks Football Team opens their season on the road at Hearn on August twenty-ninth. And if you notice the time for that game starting, it's a little odd. It's a five P M start time, but that is a Hearn thing on State Fair Weekend. Anytime they host on a Friday night during State Fair, they play at five so that they can get their patrons up to the fair by seven thirty, eight o'clock. So, a little more challenging for us to get there by that time, but obviously, we'll live with us and we'll go up and play when we're supposed to. Um, the next weekend, September fifth, is the Bucks Home Tour against Watertown. The boys golf season, they open up up in Black Hills this year on Monday and Tuesday, which is kind of a challenge to the first day of the school. But one thing that all the double A schools try to do is to hit an event on the course for the state museum. And the Black Hills Invite is Meadowburg Golf Course in Rapid and Spirit Fish Canyon out in Spirit Fish. So, state golf pitcher for the boys is at Meadowburg, so that's the reason for going out there for the state tournament. And then their home invitational is at Hellcrest this year, and that's on September twelfth. Cross Country opens their season on October, August twenty-eighth, and they're at Werman. And then the home invite for them is on Thursday, the twenty-fifth of September at Box Run. And then the last high school sport to start is volleyball, and they start this week on Thursday, the fourteenth. Uh, then they start, their first game is at home on the twenty-sixth against two of the Gorman. And speaking of August fourteenth, that's the same day as the ball sports kickoff, so everyone's invited to attend that. The food starts, the serving of food is at six P M, and that is free to the public. Uh, it's sponsored by Hy-Vee, and then we have drinks sponsored by Chesterman's and Kellygan's. So, once we get everybody to the food line about six thirty-ish, we'll have the coaches speak, and that'll take five to six minutes apiece, and we'll be out there by seven o'clock hopefully. So, again, everybody's welcome to that. The high school band got underway, just literally, they were the first ones to get going, just two weeks ago, they've been out practicing. So, if the air wind is blowing in the right direction, you might hear it at your house in the morning. They had their little parent preview show last week on Thursday, and they'll be practicing harder now in the next month, basically, before they start their marching band season officially. So, that's coming up too. And then for planning purposes, homecoming is on September twenty-sixth, so if you want to keep that in back of your mind. It's against Pier is our opponent this year. And if you're interested in the coronation this night before on the twenty-fifth, and also the fine arts and athletic hall, paying the production ceremonies will be that same night on Thursday, the twenty-fifth as well, prior to the coronation at the high school. So, if you think that's a little bit of a ways away, but you just link in, we'll be preparing for homecoming because it'll go quick like it always does. So, we're excited at the high school. All the coaches are ready to roll and getting started. And middle school activities will start once, once school opens up for them. We could wait until school starts for those guys that'll be here next week as well. Any questions for me? Mr. Dr. Kendall?
Yeah. I don't have a question, but just, um, one added item on the homecoming this year is that we're gonna kind of focus in on our hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary for the school district. So, we're gonna try to really get our community involved with floats and participants and whatnot. We'll still keep the fun with whoever we're playing, but we're also in better hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary in there.
Yeah, sounds really fun, and the weather will be beautiful. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Metz, are you up?
Well, I don't have here as many gates as Mr. Kendall says. There is one to keep in mind, though. This Thursday, August fourteenth, we have our back-to-school open houses, which is really an exciting night for kids as they come back and see classmates and meet their new teachers. It's a, it's a fun night for us at the school and something that, uh, the kids and parents, there's a little bit of tradition about coming, finding out who your teacher is, so we're excited for that. Like to give a pat on the back to, you know, to, um, think, think of today as being our first day back with teachers. Um, I've been in and out of the school all summer and, uh, last few weeks been back full-time. But when I walked through classrooms last week, most are set up and ready to go. So, it shows the commitment that our teachers have for, uh, preparing for the students and, and the enjoyment they find at our work when they come in over the summer and are preparing their rooms and getting things together and are just excited for, for those things, which is fantastic. Um, I think the other thing that I would like to share, it feels really different at Beadle this year not to have as many new faces as we'll have. We've always had kindergarten students coming in, and you have your new set of kindergartners with the twenty-five other new students. So, you know, we're really looking at about twenty-five new students or families to Beadle School this year, which feels very unusual. Uh, it'll be a great advantage, I think, for us to, to know most of the students that are coming in and those families, and those relationships have already been developed. So, uh, this should lead to a very good start to the school year when, when kids and families come in and they kind of know the routines of school and then, uh, help those other new families that are maybe part of that Webster Stewart transition or something that live closer to Beadle and are coming our way. So, um, just excited to have back, just have back a building there. But, you know, just a few of these days, it feels like, you know, it's kind of a soft start getting this app back. And then, uh, with open house this week, we'll get all those families and students in, and then, um, be ready to roll with them. So, any questions about the elementary level or Beadle School in particular?
I have a question just about the space there.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, with not bringing in kindergarten, you know, it's not a ton of extra space, but how does that feel? Have you noticed that shift in?
Yeah.
What are you expecting from those spaces, I guess?
So, one of the things that we did, and we talked about last year, is not making a rash decision and trying to fill up these rooms too quickly. We had a staff meeting in a room that fit everybody today, which was fantastic. We talked about using that room as a writers' roundtable, parent meeting room, those kind of things. We were able to move our school psychologist out of a, a room that was down in the basement. But thank goodness our building creates class, they created that for us, but they had no A C, no heat, none of those things. So, now she's gonna be up on a A level. Uh, classroom teachers will be able to more, more likely engage with her about students. We're gonna be able to have I E P meetings where we're not displacing teachers from the teacher lounge or going to the library. Uh, so, yeah, the, the added space has already feel a little bit different for us. And one of the things that we talked about is a, as a team at Beadle is, we're gonna have a, a building committee this year, and we're gonna talk about how we can, um, change some of our dynamics there by moving rooms out of the basement, by lessening the amount of time kids are transitioning either to like a intervention room or a special education room. So, we're gonna kind of look at those dynamics throughout the year, and then we'll make, uh, make some shifts over next summer and utilize those spaces. And I'm kind of a packer, which, uh, you know, some of these people, I've been over to Webster several times. And usually when something comes up, I grab it. So, I have lots of extra furniture right now, so I kind of have to buy a lot of things, but hopefully I can store it in my two or three rooms. I'll go, yeah, I'll be able to use that next year in this room. And, uh, so, I'm usually going to raise my hand and something's out there that, that we can possibly use.
And, and they just all that being resources. Thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment. Um, there's a lot of pieces moving this year with adjusting to new rooms, and I wanted to say thank you to all of you and all of your staff and all the custodial staff in the school district for making all of that happen. There's a lot of things to look forward to, so thank you.
Yes.
Very good, well said.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight on our agenda, on our agenda is, um, four different policies that we have before us. Um, the first two, we did have our first look at last year. Or last year, last month. And so, the first one, A, is our criminal background check. And we did have Sheila here last month to kind of go through that. We've had a good month now to take a look at that. Do we have any additional questions for Sheila or anything that need clarification on? Hearing none, then I would ask, this is an action item. I would ask for us to go ahead and make a motion to approve that criminal background check.
Motion to approve the criminal background check.
In a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second on the criminal background check. Roll call, please. Mueller?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Ringway? Yes. Letter B is our library materials and school resources. Same thing with that. Sheila was here last month. Um, we've had some time to look through that. Does anyone have any questions for Sheila with that? Okay, hearing none, I would ask for a motion on that policy.
I'd like to motion to approve the, um, library materials as presented.
Second? Perfect. We have a motion and a second for the library materials and school resources. Um, roll call, please. Brad?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Ringway? Yes. Letter C is our elementary boundaries. Thank you, Sheila. Um, our elementary boundaries, um, with the closing of Webster School. So, um, Dr. Kendall, are you gonna take this one?
Sure. Now, I can be as quiet as Sheila or I can say a few things here, but she does such a good job at the last meeting, we had it covered well. So, this is a new policy. Um, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, since we closed Webster Elementary School, that area now becomes unassigned. And so, um, we have unassigned areas now. If you look at our current map or old map, and the way that that's handled is that, um, parents can come in and they request an open enrollment within the district. So, and, you know, it would be for an elementary school. And so, the principals, they sit down, we have some criteria that we use. Probably the, the number one criteria is what do class sizes look like if they want to transfer to a different building? Uh, we accept some, we're able to approve some, we have to deny some. And in all of the denials, it really boils down to the class size, trying to balance those across the district. This would be no different in this, where Webster, that area has now become unassigned, we would do the same thing. Um, we probably would not have a lot of kids, and this is why. So, if you back up to last year, we had K through five at Webster. And those kids, um, who are now first through fifth, were all assigned to Stewart Elementary School. And Melanie and I did all of that work last school year. We sent a letter out, and part of that letter explained to the parents why we were doing it, and also that they had an option to do open enrollment within the district at another elementary school. I think, and Melanie, you can crack me, I think we had three that requested. And so, we worked with those families, that was it. Otherwise, they are now all settled in over at Stewart Elementary School, and that has gone really well, according to Mr. Lucas, we talked about that a little bit. So, um, there probably will not be a lot of requests in that open area because those families are already assigned. Does that make sense? You might get somebody that moves in, and that will happen, that somebody's gonna move into that unassigned area. And that's where somebody will come forward, and they'll fill out a form for assignment for their kids in one of the elementary schools. So, we just need to update this policy. We also saw, saw in there just some language that was really outdated. Matter of fact, I think there was a street or a road in there. No one had ever even heard of the road or the street. So, Kelly got that, she's lived here all her life. Um, she asked me, and I said, I don't know. And so, we checked with other people, and it, don't know. And it's been in there a long, long time, so it was an oversight. So, with that, I take any questions?
Board members have any questions for Dr. Kendall on the elementary boundaries? Okay, this is a first read, so we will be bringing that back next month for us to be able to vote on. D, the policy for single-sex multi-occupancy room privacy is pertaining to House Bill twelve fifty-nine. And we do have Paul here to be able to talk to us about that.
Well, good evening. Among the bills, the legislature passed and the governor signed in the last legislative session was House Bill one-two-five-nine, which mandates for schools and public, uh, state, uh, government buildings generally that the controlling body, in this case, the school district, designate all multi-occupancy rooms used either as restrooms, changing areas, or, uh, sleeping quarters to be designated exclusively for the use of males or females. And the legislation defines male and female in objective physical genetic terms. Um, and requires, uh, that, uh, students not willing to use, uh, that room designated be given an accommodation by request to use a, a single-person room, uh, not designated for either sex. That's, uh, the policy in a nutshell. Um, it extends, as I say, to restrooms, changing areas, and sleeping quarters, so that would cover events, you know, when the students are traveling or something like that. Uh, any questions about that?
Any questions for Paul from the board members?
If I can add something, Kathy?
Absolutely.
Um, so, I would add this, that I did a walkthrough of all of our facilities. The, our elementary schools, middle school, high school, and Crane Younger. And we have, um, non-designated bathroom areas in every one of those buildings. So, we, we can easily, um, make this happen. It's easy to do. And so, um, you know, we will have no problem with doing this. I would also add that we've never had an issue in the Yankton School District. And you will note tonight that we've had a lot of policies on the agenda the last two meetings, including this one. And, you know, this is due to the legislature making a lot of changes. And frankly, I'm just being honest about this, these are really local decisions. We don't need legislation, in my opinion, for any of the things with these policies. We can, we've done a great job in Yankton, other school districts have. And so, I just want to add that as part of the, the comment section tonight that, um, we've got a lot here, and I hope that the legislature begins to pull back on some of the things that they're doing in Pier and realize that we have very competent people on this school board and this community and administratively that we can make these decisions in Yankton, and we've done it for a long time. So, we've had no issues with this. We can deal with the bathroom piece of it, just like we've done in the past.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right again, this is our first read, and we'll be seeing that come back, uh, to us next month. Item nine is the Associated School Board of South Dakota and S A S E, um, conference that the board was able to participate in last week. And I thought it would just be nice to take a couple moments just to kind of have everybody highlight maybe their favorite session that they did, um, something that they, um, gathered from the conference. I do think as a board, we are the face of education, and I think it serves well to be able to keep ourselves educated as well to of the things that are out there that, um, school districts are facing, um, each year. So, with that, does anybody want to start out? Alright, Sarah?
I'll start. As an eager new school board member, um, it was great to come together with all of the public schools across the state and field support and all the things that we're navigating here and navigating what legislature's sending down, navigating changes within our school demographics. Everybody's feeling it in our state, and we're able to discuss it and strategize and provide resources amongst each other. Um, I'm gonna name all three that, that I really liked and not just one. Um, one was about school libraries and some, and the library programs that are master's degree programs that U S D have shut, and it was talking about the impact of that throughout, um, the course of time as it goes by. What does that mean for what we can provide for school libraries? And Becky's here, our, um, our person who has a master's degree in library sciences, and she provides and supports all of our staff, so I'm proud to have that. Um, other schools are unfortunate, they just have a paraprofessional, but we are very fortunate and glad, thank you also, Becky. Um, I got to hear about the World of Dakota Project and making sure that we are utilizing technology like A I to be able to pull from local nation, tribal nations to make lesson plans in the snap of a finger. Um, to have that at our fingertips is incredible, especially for South Dakota. Um, and then also, I went to a crisis, from crisis to care, and in Yankton, we're very fortunate with the list and our payable health system to be right here in our community. But to hear that even in rural areas, they have support mechanisms as well, so. And it's great just to keep ourselves informed of what our role is as the board. They make sure we're following rules and how to be a public body and make sure we're doing what we need to do for our constituents. So, I had a, it was a great experience.
Excellent.
I'll take you back off that just a little bit with, um, touching on our role. That was one of the things I really took away, you know, I mean, a lot of us are new here. Um, and having that reminder of what the school board's job is, um, in line with the district was really refreshing to hear again and to be able to be in a room with people who are all in that same boat. Uh, the other thing that I think I took away that was the reason I felt so drawn to the Yankton School Board, which is the focus on students. Um, you know, that was something that was brought up multiple times in, uh, I was only able to attend one course, but, um, in that one course, just how many times it was brought up that the students have a focus, you know, as the students, administrators, teachers, and making sure that that's where we're keeping our eyes on and keeping ourselves focused on that, that all the decisions we make are focusing on the best outlook for the children. Um, and that was something I saw before I ever joined the board. Um, so just having that reminder and that focus, I think it's just always beneficial. And, I don't know, thinking about the kids and the purpose being for them is, is joyful, and I think a good reminder for all of us that that's why we're in it. And I really just had a really positive, exciting, warm feeling leaving, thinking about the students and the kids, and that's what we're all in this for. So, I took that away, and it just hyped me up for this year. So, excited to see where this year goes, especially with new facility and the changes amongst the other schools within the district as well. So, just excited to see what this year has to bring for everyone.
I can go.
Okay.
One of the sessions I went to with Justin, I think, I see you were in there. It focused on the importance of early ed, you know, zero to five, how vital that window is for growth, development. And that's obviously not like news to anyone in this room. But they brought up a really interesting statistic. So, they said for every one dollar a community, I think it was for every one dollar a community investor's early ed, long-term, depending on the study, you could see up to sixteen dollars R O I on that. So, I mean, that's from like economic growth, healthier communities, a lower rates of incarceration, one of the other things they talked about. But it's just like a huge reminder to me like how special it is for Trailhead to be opening next week. And then also, um, I mean, it's just, we're, we're kind of lucky here to have that and, and how important and kind of beneficial that long-term investment is for the city of Yankton. So, just, uh, kudos to everyone involved before I even came on the board, and I'm kind of beneficial. And I'm, I'm lucky to be a part of this and just a reminder to Yankton how big of a deal that is. And it's really unique in South Dakota especially, so.
Um, to piggyback off that, I took you off here, but, uh, in that meeting too, I thought it was unique that um, of all the statistics, people of all the states, I think the number was like something like seven thousand. The other states are the states cumulatively spend on early childhood education. Um, South Dakota spends zero, but Yankton School District did not. Yankton School District seized the value in that and went forward with the Trailhead Learning Center, um, without, I guess, peer support. And one of the stories that hit home with me is he talked about, um, one of the representatives, I was a farmer, and, uh, he was like, it's not our business to pay for, um, early childhood, that's a parent's job. And, um, the presenter made a good point, and Jordan can crack me if I'm wrong, but he said, uh, you farm, Mr. Representative. He said, yes, I do. Um, when you plant your crop, you just come back in July and hope it looks great. And the guy said, well, no. He goes, well, what do y'all do? He said, well, I have a team of people, and we make sure we get started, and we have to get an early start. And if we don't get an early start, um, that's a cop of failure, like his staff has shown. And, uh, the guy said, oh my God, I never thought of it like that. That's a great idea, and then voted against it anyway, the fundee. So, I was like, if you can convince someone in here, then they voted against it anyway, it's, it's a frustrating thing. But I think the school district here has made a, a statement by going forward, Trailhead and, and prepaid. Um, it's fun to see, hmm, that sort of thing going forward, whether without support from the state. Like you said, we're, we're leading from the front down here.
Absolutely. Anyone else commenting? Uh, I will say too that, you know, it is the focus of the kids and making sure that, you know, policy is followed, that is out there, just kind of refamiliarizing ourselves and getting ourselves educated in the policies that are there. School safety, um, was another, um, program that we ended up. Um, a lot of technology, technology in the classroom, technology that we can use. Um, and it's just leadership. I ended up taking, um, the board president's, um, class because it's been a while since I've been in this role, and I just want to make sure that what we're doing is right and following the process. And I just wanna make sure that what we're doing is right and following the process that we're supposed to, to run effective meetings and to make sure we're using the best time as well. So it was a great experience. It was a full day and a half, um, a lot of great speakers and information to bring back and utilize for our school year.
I would also say that, um, you know, leaving that conference every year, this year was no exception. That when you've had an opportunity to sit in on sessions and have some good dialogue between meetings and, you know, at dinner and lunch and those kinds of things. We really do do a lot of great things in the school district. And from food service, which we're gonna hear about tonight, to our transportation, how we, uh, treat kids, our communication with parents, having an active school board. We have all of our school board members at hand. We have all of our school administrators present in the Yankton School District. I don't know that there was any other district in the state that had that. And so I'm proud of what we do here. And I just, I don't know, appreciative of all the people in this district and all the different jobs they do because it's a team effort. It doesn't roll and it doesn't move the way that it does without a lot of people eyeing staring well. So compliment to our entire district.
Absolutely, well said. Item number ten on the agenda is the summer food program. And Laura Horrachek is gonna give us an update on all the activity this summer.
Thank you, there was a lot of activity this summer. Um, I'm Horrachek and I just wanted to say that I'm so happy to be here to give an update on the Yankton School District Summer Food Program. Uh, we believe that our Grab and Go program this year was a huge success. We served eighty thousand three hundred and twenty-six meals this summer, uh, which was over five and a half times of the meals that we served for the previous summer of fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-two. Uh, this summer we grabbed and go, um, we were really excited about that. Uh, last summer we did, uh, what was called dining in our congregancy where everybody comes to us. And this, this year's summer, we did a little different, uh, with twice weekly pickup days. Our program provided free breakfast and lunches for every day of the week. Um, we also had United Way for a bookshelf where kids picked up books. So it was kind of fun while parents were waiting or packaging up, um, their, their food in, in boxes. Um, all the kids were sitting around the little red bookshelf, so it's kind of fun to, fun to see that. Um, we also had Dan Pendle from the Yankton Fire Department. Uh, he was, he gave away forty-one smoke alarms this summer, which was great. A lot of information about fire safety, the kids, um, and I think anytime a little kid sees a fireman, they're just, you know, in, just enthralled. So he had a lot, a lot of, um, audience for, for his, uh, uh, fire safety talks. But, um, we believe our school program was a huge success, um, and a huge help for our families within our community. Um, just a couple of statistics, um, that our department put together. We provided one eight-ounce serving of milk of each meal, so two eight-ounce servings of milk each day. This equates to a little over five thousand gallons of milk that we gave away this summer. Uh, with the average gallon of milk in South Dakota being four dollars and fifty-three cents, that's twenty-two thousand dollars of milk just alone. So that's kind of, kind of an awesome figure. Um, we heard so many great things from our parents and the community. This program helped so much with our grocery bills over the summer. And some even stated that they hadn't bought, bought, hadn't, hadn't had to buy a gallon of milk all summer, which was nice. And on top of that, we weren't busy enough, we also had a summer food review from the state, um, which was fun. Um, it actually went really well. The, the state review team has some really, uh, great things to say about the program with us in our first, very first year. So, uh, we passed and, and so that's a plus. Um, but I just wanted to say that this program is possible due to the hard work of, uh, what Y S D child nutrition staff who gave, who, um, dedicate their summers to providing meals to our kiddos. Um, and Detective Kendall, Shereen, and the school board for having such support in our program and, and for giving us the go-ahead to, to, to kind of pull the trigger and, and switch programs. So very happy about the summer and we're excited to do it next year if they offer it, so. Any questions for me?
My one comment is I remember front work when Justin and I were just coming on and we were having to meet. And Kaylon and I remember Dr. Kendall said you and him had sat for a full day trying to plan to get this work. So thank you for keeping your eyes open for opportunities like this and then for all your work tonight to happen.
Thank you. So that's our pleasure. Um, we like, as lunch ladies and, and lunch dudes, um, we, we really like to have kids have full bellies. So it warms our heart that we had so many kids, um, so many families partake in this program this summer, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number eleven on the agenda is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Seven.
All those in favor signify with aye. Aye.